You are watching Access the Port County Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 16th meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesses the port county.org.
Do I need to say the punch points?
I'm going to say this. I'm going to say this America and to figure out what we're just fans. One nation under God, indivisible, with one earth and one sky.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome to the May meeting for the Trail Creek Town Council. Has everyone had a chance to read through the minutes? Any questions or comments on the minutes, or corrections? I don't see anything.
I'm good.
You good? If there are no questions, comments, or corrections, then we can thank you all.
A second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the fund report. We have a two pager this morning.
Jocelyn, do you have any concerns or?
No, everything else.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the fund report?
I'll make that motion. Well, Sharon, how many motions to approve the fund report today?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. And payment of the bills. And I didn't see anything that I thought stood out, but if anyone else did?
Insurance is always crazy.
The insurance is always going to be high. Just one of those things. Questions, comments? Anyone? Do we have a motion to approve the payment of the bills?
I move to approve the payment of the bills for April 2023.
In a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic.
Do we have any correspondence this morning, council?
We have a little note from Val Penola from 204 Oriole Trail that received on April 26th via the mail. And it just says Trail Creek Town Board and Street Department, we have some extra money now. Is there a chance that your, that our road, Oriole Trail, can be fixed and repaid? This has been requested for years and well, there's no money. Yeah, other roads, not so bad. We're done. I feel this road condition is bringing, sorry, it's hard to, bringing down the value of the house to Val Penola.
I'm pretty sure that is. Because Penola did just pass away as well, and so we got that right before she passed her last. I do believe that road is on our list for this year, though, correct?
I'm pretty sure it is.
I think it is.
Did you say Moreel?
Yes.
Yeah, Bluebird too.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. And I did get a chance to call her to let her know that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. It's unfortunate that we waited so long to do it for her, but it unfortunately had to be what that had to be.
By my, I, by my whole family, I might, I'd pass them on to the family.
I did speak with her son, and, or maybe it was her grandson.
Do you remember this one? Matt, maybe?
But she was in the background and she was, you know, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good. Okay. Moving on, did you hear anything more from Shavon MS4? Nor have I.
Other than I passed a lot of refunds are anticipated to come, it sounded like in the next month or so.
That's what we're hoping for. So, we're hoping for, so unofficially, we've heard rumor that there may be some refunds coming from the group MS4 that we all had at one time. So we'll hope that that money comes through and that can help pay for some of Shavon's services, which would be nice.
Yes, it would.
So moving on to the attorney's report.
Nothing of consequence other than I had spitting crickets from Evergreen Plaza since I sent some correspondence up to, what we would like to do, unless you like to do sense of more formal correspondence to the owner of record instead of citations. That's really what your pleasure is from there. Between Marshall and I, we've, we've communicated, we've talked to the property manager. He was responsive and at least showing some signs of cooperation and he's completely notified my correspondence for the last month.
So he hasn't responded to you at all?
He hasn't responded.
Has he done any work to clean anything up?
I remember several years ago, we met with Dr. Cora. I think Warren, you were on that, maybe that would be a good course of action to take.
I think maybe that's, that's our next course of action, then. Because I think maybe we'll get some, some kind of movement if we, if we meet with Dr. Cora.
Yeah. Really, probably should give up, you know?
No.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a blind on the, on the south end of town. It really is, you know? He's cutting every two weeks and the grass is getting considerably high. The battle wound just brings it down. It needs to be a weekly maintenance, just on the grass, not to mention all the other things that I've pointed out to Mr. Willoughby.
We can't, there's the house going, we can't clean it and cut it, charge it to them?
Well, he's cutting it every, they cut it today, but it's been two weeks since they cut it. They cut it every other week and it needs to be cut every week.
Plus the disrepair, plus the sign, is the side.
The side is still there.
It's later for when Mr. Herbock was still there.
Just the old road behind the Mottles Building.
You can always cite them, you could have me just send certain correspondence to them.
Maybe we just sent the letter first, let's, let's start there. And if we need to, then maybe we can meet with, with Dr. Cora.
We can edit that up.
Invite him to a meeting, get through it.
Let him know our concern is face to face.
Well, maybe say, then let's just get an appointment to kind of summon you to a meeting to discuss it, right? To, I can't imagine he won't be responsive, but, so that property manager was very responsive before and has not been as of late.
Okay.
So I'll do that.
Anyone else have any thoughts or opinions on that?
I think that would be a course of action.
Let's, let's start with something a little more, but I don't need to know that we need to do citations yet, Fred. Something a little more formal.
So we're going to reach out directly to Dr. Cora, then?
I, I think we should, don't you?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Do we know how to do that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay.
I'm, we, I'm more than willing to represent.
That would be fantastic.
That works.
Because you've been through this process before with them and that's, thank you. Anything else, Chris?
That is it.
Okay. Hello.
Most of the things I'm going to talk about are listed under Old Business.
Okay.
We'll just wait for those topics.
Okay. So we'll wait for that. Our Park Department has not scheduled a meeting yet, so we'll, we'll continue to work on that. Sharon and I will get together to discuss.
Yeah.
Anything from our building inspector, Jocelyn?
Yeah.
How about planning and zoning?
I don't have anything to, but I do have a question. Is there anything going on more with the whole Woodruff property? I mean, where are we at with that?
Well, there was some correspondence, I think, from Mr. Reardon in between that the law's changed a little bit in the process and I know he, well, when I read that, he was assessing a little bit.
Because I know the whole thing, I know the thing that happened with the Michigan City and the whole sewer thing, but I think that was pretty much all resolved, right?
Um, yeah, for the most part, it doesn't do anything that negatively affect that, but like I said, Mr. Reardon's portion, there was a little tweak in the law, but I don't think that that is, that also isn't at all in mind, but it needs to move forward.
Right.
My understanding of that was that he was going to try to assess, but what if anything that had on timing? I don't think there's any reason that still can't be concluded.
You got the approval from the school board too, right? Okay, so.
All right, Woodruff just needs to apply the parallel portion of the final plat approval and then all those things need to be done at the same time.
All right, I was just curious.
I will follow up with Mr. Reardon in between that.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know where he's at in the whole process.
Okay. Moving on to our street department, police department. I won't skip you, I promise.
Good evening, I only have two things to report. First, yesterday was the first day to register for the hack session of the Tier Two Gathering Class on Plainfield. They opened up at eight o'clock, but it's online at eight o'clock. There were 24 seats available, about seven o'clock our time, 24 seats available. By the time I was done at 7:03 out of time, there were not 18. By, by 45 minutes later, they were all gone. But we got confirmation today that he is registered, so Jason will be attending the Academy June 26th through August 18th. That is fine. That was the biggest, biggest scare because they fill up so fast and, and they're kind of at the mercy of their system as to when you can get in or not, so.
You said August 18th?
Yes. Monday, June 26th through Friday, August 18th. The other thing was a little more in depth. Last month, we talked about the easements and the ditches and maintenance on them. My instructions were to reach out to Mr. Willoughby and talk about the responsibilities. I did hear that from him and I will speak for you, but the easiest way to put it is, it really depends on what the covenant said, or the, the.
The easement.
Easement language says, as to who's responsible for, there's two types of maintenance on a ditch, correct me if I'm wrong. There's the maintenance such as cutting and pick up garbage, and then there's the maintenance erosion and, and failure, two separate types. We're strictly talking about keeping clean to keep the water flowing.
Right.
We believe that it's most likely the responsibility of the property owner. However, it's best to look at the language in that easement and the pressures put forth. Do we want to look into that to see what that language is?
I don't know if it has copies of that.
I don't know that anyone has copies.
I think the best thing to do is like when you go to actually complete the loan and sign all the paperwork for your house, it would be in the.
We're speaking more specifically about Evergreen Plaza.
He means Evergreen Plaza, all of the easements we have there.
But it's still, I could just find any other.
Right, any, any house that would, but that, that ditch should have the easement language in it, yeah.
We should really ask to reach out to the county and.
I think so.
And it, it may be that if it's public, that's your responsibility to do what we need to say.
Is it our responsibility to cut that, or is it the property owner?
I think we need to find out what the easement says specifically.
He did reach out to us about the condition of the, specifically behind Evergreen Furniture and the Dollar's floor. Well, that's his track and I'm looking at Beacon and reporting to Beacon, which I know is not.
It's not, correct.
However, it's not that far off and it shows that his property line would be on the north side of that ditch.
It is.
Therefore, the question is, is our responsibility to cut it, or is it his responsibility to cut it?
It depends on how far the easement goes outside of the ditch itself.
Right, that's what we talked.
I think we can find it specifically.
Are we certain there is an easement there? No? Yeah, that's, that's the thing. We, we don't know whose it is and whether there is, we're speaking of easements, but we don't know if there's an actual easement.
There should be, because it's a drainage ditch, it's a huge drainage ditch. So there's got to be some.
I know there's a utility easement there.
Okay, so we'll grab that. And then the other question, which I already talked to the street commissioner, is they had concrete blocks, Jersey barriers out there. If you remember a few years ago, the town had a pump put in to alleviate flooding.
Yes.
At the south end of Black Oak and that cul-de-sac area, and it drains into there and then the pump pumps it into that ditch that we're speaking of. Well, there's a big tank under there where the pump is at, and there's been a lot of truck traffic going over the top of that tank, so they put these Jersey barriers out there. Mr. Pritz didn't like that either. He didn't feel that they should be there, so they were removed. However.
Did we remove them, or did Mr. Pritz remove them?
We removed them because he wanted them removed. However, they need to be there to protect our, our home. It's, I mean, he may not like it and that's unfortunate, but we've got, we've got to protect that drainage pump there. So they were removed and, and again, that question was posed to Mr. Willoughby and it's pretty much the same response.
Okay, so I think let's find out what the easement says first and where the, the property lines are.
The pump exists.
Correct.
Presumably if you have a pump and there's a drain there, there's a.
There should be something there. So let's find out all of that information first and then I think we can move forward.
Yeah, and it's not just Mr. Pritz, it's the entire.
It's the entire, right.
All the way down to Risky Ave. That it, it all becomes overgrown. And I know Ken was here right after the meeting, because the other question was, what types of plants are native to a ditch and have to stay or can't stay? Because I know some of them you have to have to eliminate erosion.
Right.
But things growing in the middle is trying to slow it down and make a storm drainage ditch useless.
Right. Pragmities that you normally see, they get really tall, they have like the merries tail at the top. Those are invasive plants. So you can cut those down. Cattails, I, I'm not sure. That's one of those, they're going to grow up to be eight or 10 feet tall, but I, I don't think they're invasive, but I'm not positive.
Would you know how to identify either or? If you went out with Joe to tell him, these can go and these can't?
Well, after the cattail gets, gets weird. I can tell you that.
And, and the problem is, it all has to go.
Right. You can't like pick and choose if it go around.
Yeah. Believe the natural.
So, my, my question is, do we know why that giant crane is still sitting there leaking oil all over the place?
There's, we have no restriction on that.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's Pritz's. That belongs to Pritz Construction.
Does it, does, is it operational?
I'm pretty sure it is.
I just wondered why it was there. Was it there to place those barriers initially, or?
That's their property.
All right, wonderful.
That's, yeah. We don't have anything that I could find.
Well, right, because it's, it's private, right?
It's commercial property. They, they started moving everything across the street and I don't know why that's not over there, but that's.
I was just curious.
The conversation regarding that in the Road of Some, Someville. Do we have any record of Mr. Doyle when that was established and, and, because he did all the homework?
He did, and that was when you were still on the council.
He did all the homework.
That's not 10 years ago.
Yeah. And he cut, he had to cut through there, through those apartments to get over there to that ditch. And so there's, he did a lot of homework on that, but I don't know who's got records on that.
I think that was more than eight or 10 years ago.
It was, it was not, because I was on the council.
Oh, were you?
And that was for him.
Yeah.
That was, this is year 12.
Wow.
That was right at the beginning of when Scott and I were both elected that year. And so you should have the drawings, actually.
The drawings, yes.
One of the meetings, but.
Okay.
I remember him.
Yeah.
There was a lot of, they were gonna survey that. Yep. A lot of homework, a lot of work before you get all that. Make sure what you like.
And again, my, my reasoning for taking lead on this is simply because Mr. Pritz had a complaint about the, the condition of it. Well, it's not just behind his, it's everything, but who's responsible for cutting it? That's really, that's the biggest concern.
Okay.
That's all I have. Who else have anything for me?
Thank you to you and, and your guys for everything you do every day.
I do have one, one other thing, a, a correction. I just want to give a shout out to Jason. Speaking last week, he pulled a car over our traffic stop here in Trail Creek and was able to get a gallon sized bag full of marijuana. So it was just over half a pound, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna get this good out there.
Definitely.
So, throw that out there.
Definitely.
Other than that, appreciate your support as always. Guys, if you have any further questions.
We'll do, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to the street department now. Mr. Reservis did send a note. He said that he was not, sorry for not being able to make it tonight, wanted to talk about the pumping station behind Napa, which we just addressed. The dump truck is in for an estimate on the work to refresh it. He does not have an estimate yet on that. And the leaf machine is in to have repair work done to the hydraulic lift cylinder and fuel tank. So that, he's also waiting for an estimate on that. Other than those things, he had nothing else. But if we have questions, we can contact him directly.
Yeah, I need to get hold of Mr. Zee that the 2013, I, you know, they did some patching on it, but it's still, it's still really not up to, up to par 2015. It's, it's still bit down and I don't, you know.
Pretty sure that.
I can't level, you know, level that thing off a little bit better.
I think this, I think that's on the list also, that patch right there.
That grid was also on the list.
I thought it was too.
Yeah.
Joe said this morning, he didn't think it was.
I could have swore that was on our list.
I just didn't have a chance to.
We can look again.
Okay.
Just to double check that. Anything for ADA?
Uh, just Mr. Fuel's, uh, finance list to do. So we're not, nothing to report.
Okay, fantastic. How about Merpsey tonight? No card. Okay. Moving on to Old Business, we have the community crossings, mashing funds threat.
Sharon, I think most of you got an email with the bidding schedule. When was that? Sam, Sam Mozy from our company is here to answer questions about, about the project, if you have any. But basically, we need to be able to approve the schedule, that would be, you know, the advertisements in the previous meeting and when bid openings are going to be, and then the award of the contract. Now, the bid opening will happen on a regularly scheduled town council meeting date.
Correct.
But the award of contract is a week later, so you'll have to approve a special meeting in order to, to award the contract. So if we can get those two things approved tonight, we can get the ball rolling, get the advertisements out on May 19th and get this thing going.
Okay, so I don't know if everyone else has this with them or not. Sam wants to do the first advertisement on May 19th, the second a week later on May 26th. The pre-bid meeting would be June 5th. The bid opening would be at our regular meeting on June 20th. And then the award of contract, which would be a special meeting, would be June 27th. And I'll make sure that everyone gets this email, I'll forward it out to everybody. And Sharon, I can print a copy for you.
Okay.
So that we can get that out to everybody. So again, first advertisement, May 19th, second, May 26th, the pre-bid meeting, June 5th, the bid opening on June 20th, and then award of contract or special meeting on June 27th. Now, the pre-bid meeting, we all need to be here for that, I believe?
I don't think you need to be here, John.
Okay.
Contract does that, so they have bids.
Okay.
And if anyone wants to come from the town group, but if you are not here.
Okay. What time did you want to do all these meetings?
Um.
So that, I mean, obviously our council meeting would be at 7:00 on the 20th.
It would be towards the morning.
Okay. The award of contract, if you need us all here for that one?
It would be in the.
In the evening?
Yeah, three.
Okay. So then on the 27th, we would need to be here probably 6:30? That one's for everybody?
Six.
The 26th?
Six.
That's June 27.
And that's, right, that's a Monday.
Okay.
That's May, May 26th, right?
Nope.
No?
June 27.
Oh, June 27th, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Actually, that's a Tuesday. May 26th is second advertisement.
Right.
June 27th is 6:30.
Correct.
Okay.
What's that, May 1?
So May was just the advertisements?
So.
So that we don't need to be present for. The first advertisement was, or is, the 19th.
And 19, so we don't have to be.
Right. Then the next advertisement, which we don't need to be there for, is the 26th.
Okay.
And then the pre-bid meeting, which Sam will handle, would be on June 5th, which is a Monday.
And we don't need to be?
Nope.
Okay.
And then June 20th is our regular meeting at 7:00 PM.
Right, okay. And then 6:30?
And then 6:30 on the 27th, then we can open, or we can award the contract.
Okay.
Got it?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I always feel like I have my hat turned towards you, I don't like that. So that gives us all of the dates. Anything else that we need to know, Sam?
No.
Okay.
Those morning, this morning, I was, I think it was the 5th was the only one. What time? Because if it's in the evening and you're not going to be here, is Josh going to be here? If not, we'll.
I don't think that for the 5th, we need to, that can be on the morning. We shouldn't need to be here for that one.
Okay, so did it work? Okay, then we won't even, definitely.
No. Okay.
Jennifer, you don't need that written down all the time, you said.
The only, the only time you need to have written down, other than the, the regular meeting on the 20th, is that following week on the 27th, at 6:30. Okay. If there's nothing further on that, then we'll, we'll move on.
Okay.
Now, do you have a list of streets with you?
Yes, I.
Can you tell us if 2013 Greenwood is on that list?
Greenwood?
Greenwood?
We don't have Greenwood.
Okay. So then we'll talk to Joe about, about the other issue.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Get it on there.
I just wanted to double check that one before you left.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to 1901 East.
Do you need to vote on the schedule, to approve the schedule?
I don't believe so.
No. All right. So 1901 East Cool Spring, Michelle Farrell has a drainage problem in her yard. She lives next door to the Dodi Apartments, and that's also the town limit line. And there's a ditch that runs along the west property line, east property line of the apartment building. When there's a significant rain, her, her whole yard floods and it's getting into her basement. So she has gone to the Michigan City Border Works to try to get them to come out here and look at their storm sewer that runs partway down that line up to the street and then goes out to the ditch between, is that Risky and White Oak? Anyway, the sanitary district was given the task of looking into it and they gave it to their attorney and their attorney says, we can't do work on private property. Kind of like the Evergreen Plaza deal. I've got a copy of a plat that John Doyle prepared that Michelle Farrell gave to me, and there is no easement on that west line where that ditch and storm sewer is. Um, she's, you know, looking for help. Every time she rains, you know, it's basically floods.
Where is, where is the root cause? Where is the root cause? Making that back up.
We don't know. We don't know. I think there, there's a head wall there just south of Cool Spring that looks like it's plugged up partially, kind of blocked. From an engineering standpoint, what needs to be done is it needs to be cleaned and jetted and then inspected with a camera internally and see if there's any collapses or leaks.
Is that actually under Cool Spring?
I believe so. But we, I don't know. I haven't, I don't have a systems map showing where it goes from her property.
Yeah, because it's probably running, runs through over property line right now.
I think it runs to the north side of Cool Spring and it runs west.
Well, that side of, that side of- That side of Risky is Michigan City. It's not Trail Creek.
And the problem is, is it's also probably getting a lot of runoff from the Dodey parking lot.
Yeah, there's a very large area of the parking lot that leads to that ditch.
It sounds like, though, we need to investigate so we know what we're talking about, right? To see what's, what, what is actually the problem.
Well, like I said, you know, from an engineering standpoint, it needs to be cleaned out and it has to be jetted, and it needs to be camered.
Can we clean that out, Mr. Wilby?
But if that's not an-
Right, if that's not Trail Creek property, I have a feeling it's Michigan City.
A section under it.
They're saying it's not Michigan City either.
That, but doesn't it cut right down the middle of Risky off?
Right.
I don't know exactly where the, where the sewer is. The boundary line is-
This is the boundary line.
Yeah, the boundary line runs right down the middle of Risky.
Right.
But I don't know where the sewer is.
Well, here's the thing. When you look at this property, you can see that that line is, is, the ditch is just to, I'm looking at her house, I guess it would be just to the west.
Well, she thought the ditch was in the middle of, that there was ditch on both sides of the line, and the whole thing wasn't on one side or the other.
So my question, I guess, is how do we get Michigan City to help with this?
Well, they've already-
So that we don't take on the entire cost as our small town.
Well, they've already written a letter in 2020 saying that this is not their problem. It's private property and they weren't going to do anything. And Mrs. Farrell says-
Now, four years later, and we're just hearing of this, this year.
Yeah.
But it definitely sounds like they have a drain.
Yeah.
Michigan City has that drain, well, then that's their drain.
That's right.
But you know, there's no, there's ease for it, so.
Yeah, not the one on walkers, but the one that goes under the road.
Well, the one that goes under the road is in a road right of it, so that's nice.
Right, so that's Michigan City's.
And that's what needs to be-
Well, because of which side of the riskier on.
They have it determined.
Yeah. The thing is, she told, she told me that, uh, for the 20 years that they've lived there, that Michigan City has always maintained the ditch and the storm sewer. And then six to seven years ago, they actually came out with an excavator and dredged the ditch on her property line.
So the memory is of the precedent.
But now they're saying, no, they're not, they're not doing it. It's, it's private property and, um, they're not, they're not going to maintain it.
Well, do we have, is there a way to get the, the, uh, the blueprints to find out exactly whose property that, that, that the drain is, is on? I mean, they're saying it's, it's not theirs, and she's saying it is theirs? I mean, is there something definitive that will show us?
We didn't do the work.
No.
We would have to get a surveyor to find out where the property line is and then so know which side of the line.
What would our cost be for something like that?
Oh, I don't know. Let's, I would ask John Doyle if, if he were still here. I don't know. I'd have to contact some surveyors in the area, ask them, you know, what their cost would be for that.
And that survey would be from where to work?
It would just be a survey of her property.
Yeah.
Adjusted that area of Risky and Cool Spring?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I don't think we need to do her entire property.
Northwest pin and the southwest pin, you know, that would give us the line, and then we could measure out that line on where the ditch is.
So you're saying there's supposed to be a just, is there an open ditch that goes from Cool Spring to White Oak? Or from, to White Oak?
No. It's in a pipe once it gets to Cool Spring. There's a ditch south of, of Cool Spring.
Yeah, yeah.
That parallels the parking lot.
But there is a pipe from Cool Spring down, down north along Risky someplace.
Yeah, from Cool Spring and Risky.
No, this. You see that, see this right here?
Exactly.
This .5 sub acres runs city, Michigan City, Cool Spring out.
Could be on the west side.
On the south side of Cool Spring.
It's on the west side, it's in Michigan City.
Are you looking at this?
Yeah.
Like right in between there?
Would they have any, uh, the-
Or this?
The sanitary district or whoever, whoever did the work supposedly all these years that she-
But it goes right to there.
They might did the work, but there been any documentation of that, over all those that they worked, that they worked on this site at this address?
There, there might be some in, with the sanitary district.
I, I would probably start with the sanitary district and ask them if they've got some drawings, maybe?
I mean, but how long has the Dodey Apartments been there? About 50 years?
The thing is, though, they just redesigned all of Cool Spring out not that long ago and they, when they widened it.
15-inch sewer in.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. We have not, we've been looking for some of those plans and have not found them yet.
They should have.
I don't know, Josh Lee, if you might have it.
I can look.
Said somewhere.
Yeah.
That would be very-
Is there a sense they can source past practice?
Well, I don't think that just because they've done a presidential value, they get to decide whether it's their work or not, you're not going to be able to enforce it in Michigan City. You'd like to look at your own residents and say it's a private matter, but on some levels, you may need to contact Dodey. And I do think that if you're in need of help, that you probably should cut her out and her understanding of what the district has and hasn't done and will do, and have Haas or somebody contact them that can speak the same, same language.
Right.
Maybe cut to the chase on that, so.
Well, I guess my question then would be, is, is, if it's not your property, why did you, all these years, clean it out? Just, just because, I mean, I, you know?
They had a different year, they had a different administration before, it's, it's different time, different mayor, different director, so I have no idea why they did or didn't clean it out, if they did indeed clean it out.
How many? But she said those problems four years, you said?
Well, she, she provided a letter dated 2020 where the sanitary district said that they were not responsible and they weren't going to work on private property.
But I don't think it's private property that we're, she's asking them to go to clean out. It's under the street, if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly.
Right. But at some point, that just has to be proved. That's the issue, right? They're saying, what she's saying is that she has a ditch on her property, right? It's all a lot of her property. They don't have a little touch of that. The issue is if it's back.
No, she's saying that the ditch straddles the property line.
Where do you say that head wall was located?
Just south of the, of the street.
So that would be an easement portion.
Right.
No, there is an easement.
There's, it's further off of the street than the right-of-way line, and there's no easement.
Have them take a look at this real quick.
So I think this is the right-of-way property, so.
So that piece of property that I have highlighted right there is Michigan City property. It goes right up to our town border. Where's the, can you, do you know where the head?
That is an additional right-of-way that they got for the white inch.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So, uh, uh, where's the head wall and locate?
Yeah, and then, well, that's what we don't know. So we don't know where the head-
Oh, I thought you could see it.
Well, you can.
Right.
You can't see the property line.
So if we-
So if we can find out where the property line is, we could see whether it's in Trail Creek or Michigan City.
Okay.
And if it's within the street right-of-way, you know, if it's close enough to the street to be in that additional area.
So if Michigan City doesn't have the drawings to show you that, you'd have to send out a surveyor, correct?
Or the homeowner, or I guess the-
Well, issues to-
Yeah.
The set of plans to improve Cool Spring and put that 15-inch sewer in there might have that information shown on it.
Okay.
That's one of the reasons we want to get a set of those plans, so we can see that.
Somebody's got to have it.
I believe you could put a 15-inch sewer in, nobody has any copies of that.
Yes.
And you can see where it's in the side of the road?
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
You can see all that.
Yes.
So what, what are you suggesting our next step to be then?
To get a set of those plans on Cool Spring and see if they show the storm sewer in that area, because it also will have the right-of-way lines and property lines on.
Okay.
So at that point, we can see how, where they are situated relative to each other.
Okay. So will you look for those then and then advise us?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You guys did the work.
No, it wasn't us.
Darn, because that would have been really easy.
That's the first thing Tim, Tim said was, you know, we didn't do that job, we should be able to get a set of plans.
Yeah.
So I could ask the sanitary district if we can see a copy of that project.
Public record, so if they don't-
Should be.
We can get it in a different way, so.
Yeah. I think they'll probably, I think that's a total.
Okay. So moving on now to the town hall remodel, and we've all got a copy of the bid proposal that came in your packets today.
Right, and that's just a sample sent over from the architect, architect. But we really can't move forward on that until we get the approval from the state.
Okay. And you said you haven't heard anything from the state yet.
I haven't heard anything from the state, nor have I heard anything from the state rule. But I will contact him tomorrow.
And then will you let us know if, if he has heard anything or as soon as you hear, so we can get that meeting scheduled for you and start to move forward on the process?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a question I just, just ask, uh, when this happens, to say. Who's, is Mr. Buell going to be the one that's going to say he's sitting here and-
He would like to be. He's expressed that interest.
Doing Johnny Carson would be opening that little thing and, and do that thing.
He has expressed that he would like to be the one to open them for the town council, but if you guys would like something different.
No, no, I'd like to have him there.
Appropriate.
Yeah. Or rip from his office if there's-
It would be him. Me.
He is.
Yeah.
No, that's fine. Because I would feel more comfortable.
I would too.
Do, sir?
Yeah, great.
Did he review them and?
Yes.
But they contacted all, all the instructions?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay. So any questions, comments, or changes to the, to the advertisement or proposal, the proposal?
I think all that's needed is just the date.
Yeah.
I think that's our biggest concern.
Okay. Any new business from anyone? Hearing none? Any no public comment this evening that I see?
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments from the coach's office?
Yes, I do, I did have, I have had a few people on both sides of the 110 Harding come in in the last couple weeks complaining about the condition of the property. I don't know what we're doing with that property. 110 Harding.
110 Harding, I don't think that we've ever resolved the issue of who owns the entirety of it, because part of it is owned by one and part by another. And I know that's been in the process for a while, so we'll continue to work on that. Maybe we can have Steve Thomas go out to make sure that everything is still safe and boarded up?
Sure.
So what's, what is their?
This is, this is a-
Sorry, 110, bring it back.
Oh, it should.
It should.
So when you look at 110, if this is the house, this part is owned by one owner, and this part and that side of the yard is owned by another.
Okay.
That's the problem.
That's great.
Because we've had, we've tried to get a demo order for it, and we can't because it's owned by two separate people.
Demo half the house.
That sounds great in theory, but it sounds incredibly unsafe. We'll continue to work on that one. And Chris, if we can add that to your list too.
So it's abandoned, still?
Still abandoned.
Is there a tree? Is that the house they had a tree going through or something?
No. That's a different, that's the other end of Harding.
But it's the same.
But this one also has no, yeah, no resolution, yeah.
What's, what is the holdup besides?
I wish we could-
At the same time.
What's the holdup?
It's, it's-
Besides, it's two ownerships.
It's really stressed.
You're saying it's two ownerships?
Mm-hmm.
Well, is that the holdup?
Mm-hmm.
And they don't want to?
We haven't heard back from, from either one that I'm aware of.
There's got to be a stretch of limitations on that.
We'll look into that.
Because I know Bill was constantly sending things to whoever.
With no response.
Well, Bill, as you said at the top of that, is that he did fight for the license order.
The demo order.
Got it, but then realized it was two parcels to one owner, so.
So that's where, that's where we're waiting, to see how that, yeah.
Yeah. But I'll have Steve Thomas walk around the house and make sure everything's safe.
Yeah. I think that's going to be the main concern for right now, and then we can hopefully get other answers soon. Uh, any council comments this evening?
I have a couple. Uh, one, Joe's asked me, I think maybe last, after the meeting regarding our signs, uh, I'm sure, great, their welcome signs, this is called. And I, off the top of my head, I don't remember how many there are, four, five, four, something like that.
Four.
And, uh, I proceeded to connect with school system. They are interested. I, uh, we're getting, trying to, I'm trying to get a name going before they leave for the summer, uh, to have the school help out with this.
Oh, fantastic.
Just so you know that. And Joe, it's next year, is it next year, our anniversary?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Anyway, coordinate, something like that, for that, that kind of activity. And, uh, now, just something to throw in the bag to everybody who's buying here, um, because really is kind of really for the future, we would have to think about this. The problem behind Evergreen Plaza, it's always been there. I thought years ago, I know when I was a kid, it was an open ditch. It was a farm. I thought at one time they enclosed it with a pipe. And I'm not, and that, this is where we're talking when I was, but I don't know why they pulled it out. But that could be resolved after property is determined, who owns what, to make it easier, uh, to maintain, if we put a pipe in there, a correct pipe, you put a pipe in there, and it'll drain, it'll, they do it. It's, it happens all the time. And then you could backfill it, and then it'd be flat. And then, once whoever determines who's going to maintain it, then you can, there's an old ditch, just aside.
That is a thought. We did tons of expense with that thought.
Oh, I know, I know. I, I, I know it's in the future, but it's, they do those things, this happens all the time.
This happens all the time, I, I did it, so. I know it can, it's mine, it just, yes, there's money involved, but makes a lot easier.
It would make it a lot easier and I'm sure people there would appreciate that as well.
Well, and, you know, if you go right back there and you look at the, the, people that live on that north side of that ditch, you know, they don't care either. Because they, people on the south side don't care.
Right.
It was like, oh, it looks like that and they try to cover it up for the, the city, look mad. Anyway, just food for thought.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments from the council?
Did anybody reach out, uh, to Connie Anderson about the, uh, getting the date for the neighborhood lot sale? Is, was kind of, you know, kind of favorite, uh, doing one?
I did, and the phone was, our hand did not work.
Really?
Okay.
I got one more.[1607.12]